We have a 4:30, 4:35 work session and it is 4:35 so we're going to go ahead. Madam Clerk, would you...
You read the roll please.
Certainly, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion case, we have a work session to start us off today ladies and gentlemen from Green Iowa AmeriCorps. Ashley Craft. Ashley, go ahead and step to the microphone please and tell us and someone, I don't know if it was Ashley, if you called me or somebody did a few weeks ago and Green, AmeriCorps just does such great things for the city. I mean, you guys are here and you do wonderful work so you wanted the opportunity to kind of give the council an update on what you guys do so...
Exactly right, yep.
Welcome.
Well, thank you for allowing me the time to speak with you today. I won't take up too much of your time but that's exactly right. We've been operating here for several years now and we just wanted to provide the council with an annual update of what's been happening with our program and all the accomplishments that we've had this past year. So, as the mayor said, I'm Ashley Craft. I'm the program director for Green Iowa AmeriCorps. We're an AmeriCorps state program that's based out of the University of Northern Iowa's Center for Energy and Environmental Education. We've been operational there since 2009 in response to the flooding. Our program began to address sustainability in this area. We focus on residential weatherization service, K-30 education, and community outreach services. So, this past year we've had five full-time members come to our, come to our area from all over the country to serve 1,700 hours of service over the last 10 months. Our current group just left on July 25th and will have a new group rolling in here September 15th. But, over that time they were able to accomplish a lot in regards to residential energy efficiency, educational programming and service to Blackhawk County. And so, I just wanted to share a little bit of information with you today as regards to our, our numbers and the things we were able to accomplish. Over the course of 10 months, we had five members who were able to weatherize over 260 homes in Blackhawk County, 58% of which were for populations in need. So, for us, that's people who are 65 years of age and older, people who are low-income, veterans, and people with disabilities. So, over 50% of our services to this area were addressing individuals that we thought could need our services most, people who don't have the money, the time, or physical capability to accomplish weatherization on their own. We were also able to conduct over 40 educational programs to reach over 850 people, educating them on how to become sustainable and energy efficient in their own lives with behavior change. We were also able to garner over 2,700 hours of volunteer, volunteer hours from over 250 volunteers, doing things like tree plantings, highway pickups, community garden work. Our program has also partnered with a lot of really strong partners here in Waterloo. We work on a weekly basis with Habitat for Humanity. We've partnered with the Love Cedar Valley event. We do commart, community garden work. We have strong relationships with the city and, and people like the Blackhawk Landlords Association, anyone that we can really work with to make sure that our residential efficiency services are getting out into the public and that people are aware of the great work that we're doing and the services that are available to them. So, we only want to thank the city for ongoing support. We've been here since 2009 and been able to accomplish a lot in that time period. We hope to do great things in the future. And I also just wanted to make sure that everyone's aware of our services. If you ever encounter anybody that sounds like they could benefit from what we do, certainly send them our way. We're always looking for people who are in need who could benefit from the type of services that we're providing. So, thank you for your time today. Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Ashley, how does somebody access your services? Because actually, my office gets calls frequently.
All the time, sure. Good.
About the need for all kinds of things. So, how do we access your services? How do we get in touch with you?
Sure, yep. We have an office line, a Drac line, that's 319-273-7233. They can call us and we'd be happy to set up a time where we can come and audit their home, follow up with the weatherization. They can also access us directly through our website, which is www.greeniowaamericor.org. So, they can do that or they can shoot us an email, greeniowcf@gmail.com.
You're going to have to go slower and tell me again. Green Iowa, give me your website again.
Sure, greeniowaamericor, all one word.
Uh huh.
Dot org.
Okay.
And our email account is greeniowcf, all one word, at gmail dot com. And they can go through any of those channels. We have sites here in Blackhawk County and then we have five other counties that we're serving throughout the state. But, you can certainly get them in touch with me or our site and we'd be happy to help any way we can. Same thing with education and outreach events. If there are volunteers that you guys need for various services, our group is always looking to reach out and get more visibility in the community. So, we're available for that as well.
Okay, how many folks have you got right now?
We'll have five full-time people coming September 15th.
Okay, and then you get other volunteers to assist those five?
Exactly right, yep. We leverage as many as we can. This past year it was 250 extra volunteers for various projects that we did, so.
Counsel, how about, anybody got any questions for Ashley?
Do you have, what do these young people stay in private homes or dorms at the University of Iowa?
They all stay in their own private homes. So, we have people who come, come from all over and they receive a living allowance, a basic living stipend while they're serving. And then, a big incentive is an educational award once they exit the program, so they get around $6,000, once they exit the program, to put towards student loans or continuing education. So, a lot of people that come to us are young people, mid-20s, just graduating, having a formal degree as part of our, our requirements for our program. A lot of them are looking for relevant work experience, a lot of them from here, graduating from UNI, here from local, but really just looking to do good things, travel, have great work experiences. So, I would say that's a really big intangible of our program is we have people who are coming who are passionate about doing good things, are very eager to get out into the community. And so, having that kind of, I guess, push behind our work really tells people that we care and it's getting a lot more done.
Okay, is there a, a big waiting list? I'm wondering how much in-demand your services are. I mean, if somebody has a roof that's getting out, how long are they apt to wait?
Sure, we don't have much of a waiting list at all. I mean, we're getting people in pretty regularly and we're actually partnering with Operation Threshold, the local cap agency here. Because the work they do is so much more significant, you know, whole-home rehabs, that's not the type of work that we're necessarily doing. We would say a little bit lower than that, doing basic efficiency upgrades. We have partnered with them to work out a referral service so that there is an individual who's going to fall, you know, in the middle of their waitlist, somebody that they're maybe never going to be able to get to simply because of the priority of need that that individual has. We simply tell them to refer them to us. We can give them services and they can still remain on that waitlist. If there's, you know, their situation becomes more significant, then they can receive those services from Operation Threshold. So, that's been a big way that we've been able to use our, our availability to, to help Operation Threshold who does have a pretty significant waitlist for the, the services that they're providing.
Very good.
Yep.
Anybody more questions?
So, just to reaffirm, I think the mayor mentioned something about a roof. Your folks are more for energy efficiency, correct?
Correct, yep. So, we'll go in, we'll do a basic home performance audit, assess a home's air infiltration issues, any efficiency measures that can be upgraded. At that point, if we do identify a significant need, we'll come back in, we'll weatherize with basic efficiency measures. So, weather stripping, we'll go in and caulk around windows, give them low-flow fixtures, light bulbs, things like that. And we'll actually do a post-assessment and it can evaluate how much we had to save them in energy dollars, how much we reduced air infiltration in their home. And the big thing is for the individuals that we're trying to target, maybe living in manufactured home communities or leaky rental properties, it can be a significant difference just from that basic service that they get. And for individuals that I mentioned, it's completely free-of-charge service. So, our AmeriCorps members are brought to us through grant funding and we fundraise within each of our communities to provide the material costs for that weatherization completely free-of-charge as well, which I think is pretty substantial, that they can see energy dollars for them putting out, you know, no real funds of their own, so.
Thanks for... So, you don't do roof repairs or window...
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did misunderstand. Thank you. Okay, good.
Yep, so yeah, when we do run into instances like that, we try and be at least a resource if we know that they need more significant help than what we can offer, and trying to kind of clear up those channels. Because there is a lot of confusion between, you know, HUD and Operation Threshold and ourselves and a few others, to really clarify with the public what everybody can do and work together to be a resource for, for that individual regardless if we can be the help or not.
And what are your, you have like minimum income requirements or guidelines, don't you?
Pretty much, yep. But, we do try and keep it as basic as possible because we can. You know, there's a lot of hoops to jump through with a lot of assistance. And so, we typically say, this is about how much we think materials are going to cost for your home. If you feel like you'd qualify for any other form of government assistance, we just work it on a good faith policy. It's the same thing with age requirements and things like that. So, because of that, we can get to a lot of people very quickly.
Anybody else? Thanks, Ashley.
All right, thank you.
Very good, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Motion to adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Thanks.
Round's committee to order. Will the clerk please read the roll?
It's Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
I think we, if someone would take one and two together, I think we can combine those two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith.
Item number one is a request from Public Works Director for authorization to appoint an equipment operator, one, from a civil service list to be certified by the end of August. And item number two is a request from the Public Works Director for authorization to begin the civil service process for a central garage mechanic, foreman, and make an appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on items one and two. Would you like to address that with Mr. Rice? If there's any questions.
Afraid to touch this, but Mark Rice, Public Works Director. The equipment operator, one, is a replacement for a retirement who left in April. And the second position, the garage mechanic, foreman, is something we talked about during budget time. Actually came to back in 2010. At that point in time, we were still working out of multiple locations. It wasn't feasible to do it then, but now that all the mechanics are in one place, I'd like to move forward with that.
So, can I ask Mark, in your request for that you've got, this would be a promotional position for a current onboard employee and no backfill of a mechanic is expected at this time?
At this time.
So, what would, could you give me a little clearer definition?
Well, this will be a working foreman. Well, I make no guarantees. We're, we're 1,000 to 1,200 man-hours behind right now, but I've got one individual that's on medical leave right now. He's expected back in about five weeks. And this is just to begin the process, so this is going to be several months before this would take place. But, my thoughts are that if I can get somebody in the shop, I just, bottom line, don't have time to do it all. If I can get somebody back there to run the day-to-day operation, make sure that we've got the right priority on the right equipment, getting it in and out of the shop, got the right parts, and, and keep a daily log of that and keep an eye on it, that will improve our, our productivity and, and get maximum utilization of our man-hours.
So, that's what I was going to ask you. What exactly is this position going to do? So, it's, excuse me, what you just described?
Right. It'll, it'll take care of, I'll set the priorities, he'll just make sure it happens. Work with our parts clerk, make sure that we have the parts, that we don't just fill up the shop with a bunch of equipment we don't have parts for, make sure we've got stuff coming in timely.
So, when this person's done doing that, then he'll also be a mechanic though, correct?
He will be available as a mechanic as well, yes. And, and a lot of our foreman positions are working positions.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you roll call, roll call please?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda. Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
I think we, if someone would take one and two together, I think we can combine those two.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith.
Item number one is a request from Public Works Director for authorization to appoint an equipment operator, one, from a civil service list to be certified by the end of August. And item number two is a request from the Public Works Director for authorization to begin the civil service process for a central garage mechanic, foreman, and make an appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on items one and two. Would you like to address that with Mr. Rice? If there's any questions.
Afraid to touch this, but Mark Rice, Public Works Director. The equipment operator, one, is a replacement for a retirement who left in April. And the second position, the garage mechanic, foreman, is something we talked about during budget time. Actually came to back in 2010. At that point in time, we were still working out of multiple locations. It wasn't feasible to do it then, but now that all the mechanics are in one place, I'd like to move forward with that.
So, can I ask Mark, in your request for that you've got, this would be a promotional position for a current onboard employee and no backfill of a mechanic is expected at this time?
At this time.
So, what would, could you give me a little clearer definition?
Well, this will be a working foreman. Well, I make no guarantees. We're, we're 1,000 to 1,200 man-hours behind right now, but I've got one individual that's on medical leave right now. He's expected back in about five weeks. And this is just to begin the process, so this is going to be several months before this would take place. But, my thoughts are that if I can get somebody in the shop, I just, bottom line, don't have time to do it all. If I can get somebody back there to run the day-to-day operation, make sure that we've got the right priority on the right equipment, getting it in and out of the shop, got the right parts, and, and keep a daily log of that and keep an eye on it, that will improve our, our productivity and, and get maximum utilization of our man-hours.
So, that's what I was going to ask you. What exactly is this position going to do? So, it's, excuse me, what you just described?
Right. It'll, it'll take care of, I'll set the priorities, he'll just make sure it happens. Work with our parts clerk, make sure that we have the parts, that we don't just fill up the shop with a bunch of equipment we don't have parts for, make sure we've got stuff coming in timely.
So, when this person's done doing that, then he'll also be a mechanic though, correct?
He will be available as a mechanic as well, yes. And, and a lot of our foreman positions are working positions.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Mark? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, would you roll call, roll call please?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Those two motions pass. Item number three?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Cole?
I move that we approve a request from Waste Management Services Superintendent for authorization to begin the civil service process for a plant maintenance mechanic and make an appointment.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on that request. Oh, Larry is here. Would you like to ask Mr. Smith, any questions?
Just have a quick question. So, Larry, when we, when we hire this position, so this is going to be a new employee typically, correct? And are we hiring this person at the wage that the person that just retired left at or is this at a lower wage?
Larry Smith, Superintendent Waste Management Services. Well, what you have is you have 120-day probationary period where they would pay, be paid a dollar an hour less than a regular employee. And with the evaluation period over 30 days, they're normally given a 25-cent raise. So, in 120 days, they will be paid the same rate as the employee that left, less things like longevity, vacation times to have in five weeks, they'll only get a week after a year. But, wage-wise, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Larry? Hearing none, we have a motion, a second. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll please?
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you. [inaudible]
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you. [inaudible]
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Welper?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion, a second and adjourned, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you. [inaudible]
Let's call the finance committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda is proposed and also the minutes of August 11th, 2014. Second.
Motion, second, discussion, all in favor vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have some new business.
Madam Chairlady, I would love to take the travel requests.
Thank you.
Yes. First, we have Officer Saunders going to the International Outlaw Motorcycle Gang Investigators Conference in Denver, Colorado, September 13th through the 19th at a cost not to exceed $573. Next, we have Paul Hudding, Leisure Service Director, going to the Iowa Park and Recreation Association Conference in Dubuque, November 15th through 17th at a cost not to exceed $441. Sergeant Richter and Gurke, Law Enforcement, Supervision, Management, and Leadership in Marion, Iowa, September 23rd through the 25th at a cost not to exceed $730. And Susie Share, City Clerk, and Joyce Schrader, Financial Analyst, going to the New World Conference in Boca Raton, Florida, October 4th. That can't be through January 7th, that must be October 7th.
It is.
Thought maybe you were moving.
You have to move the line.
That's just three days. That's just three days. Cost not to exceed $3,240. And then we also have a request for approval to release partial payment, which is one half the total award for fiscal year 2015 of the Grand Museum District fiscal year 2015, partner funding in the amount of $17,441.40. Move to approve all those items.
Second.
We have motion and second. Do we have discussion?
I just had a quick question for Mr. Captain Leibold. Joe, can you?
Number one?
For number one, can you tell me, is the international outlaw motorcycle gang, I mean, is that still the entity? I know it used to be, and I know the mayor knows that very well, but is that still something we really need to be spending that kind of money on? I just don't hear too much about those folks.
Joe Leibold, Waterloo Police Department. It is about the only training opportunity for that in the nation. Officer Saunders actually is paying his own airfare and his own hotel.
I noticed that, and thank you for mentioning that. I do want to point out, too, that I'm not sure how that all worked, but God bless him for that. But, I mean, so this is an ongoing issue from a public safety law enforcement standpoint?
Yeah, it's an ongoing issue nationwide, essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Further, all in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. We have some pre-odds.
Some pre-odds. I would love to take the pre-odd.
Thank you, David.
We've got the central garage, $3,861.22 for brake components for fire engine 308. Central garage, $3,950.55. Replacement hydraulic pump for truck 708. Cultural and arts, $3,000 consultation and facilitation services for strategic plan. Leisure services, oh, plan development with cultural and arts commissions, WCA, staff, and other key stakeholders. Leisure services, $15,352.50 for grass seed for all three golf courses. And downtown areas must match the type of grass currently in these areas. MIS, $9,832.79 for Dell TK 2000 backup tape library. Police, $2,155.44 for renewal of the annual EDACS fee for Tri-County Drug Task Force portable radio fees. Sanitation, $6,696.92 for torque limit clutch. Traffic operations, $1,800 plus $306 shipping and handling for 318-inch traffic cones.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion?
I had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Captain Leibold again, please. On the Tri-County Drug Task Force, the 2,155.44, is that still the same entity it was, us and the county and a variety of other entities, or has that kind of become the Waterloo Drug Task Force, or?
Captain Joe Leibold, Police Department. No, it is still the same entity, although some of the grant funding has changed. It's still a combination of Waterloo, Blackhawk County, Cedar Falls, Bremmer. We're all involved in that task force.
Okay, is everybody else involved at the same?
In the state and in the federal.
Everybody else is still involved at the same level they were?
The same level they were early in the grant, yes.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed, same sign. I move that we approve the Budget Line Item Amendment, 7 through 11. Copies are on file in Ms. Share's office.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed, same sign. I also move that we pay the bills this week, which are $1,026,589.87.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of "aye." Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you for your time.
To all of you, all of those that are in chambers tonight and those that might be watching us on our public access television, it's Monday, August 18th, regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you would all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of prayer or silent reflection, please. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Matt O'Brien, our Director of Technology. Matt, please.
Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor.
Hart?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as proposed, also with the approval of the agenda. I move that we approve the minutes from August 11th regular session.
Second. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda, the minutes? All in favor, please say "aye." Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B16. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
And the bills this week are $1,026,589.87.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please, it's a roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes, abstained from B3, or what is it, 4B3? No, 5B3. Something like that.
So, 1B3?
Is it, is it, yes.
One with your name on it.
The one that says my name is.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two is a motion to receive and file proof of publication of the notice of public hearing in answer to the demolition and site clearance services for 801 and 805 Commercial Street.
Second.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, were there any written objections on file to the demolition of 801, 805 Commercial Street?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak either for or against this item? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution confirming approval of plans, specification, form of contract, et cetera.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution ordering construction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion and receive and file and instruct the city clerk to read bids and refer to Community Planning and Development Director for review.
Second.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are, ladies and gentlemen, we have four bids that we received on this particular item. Madam Clerk, would you read us the bids, please?
The first bid was from Benton Sand and Gravel of Cedar Falls, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $33,800.33,800.00. The second bid was from Kelly Demolition and Escavating LLC of Mount Vernon, Iowa. The bid bond is for 5% and the bid amount is for $69,801.69,801.00. The third bid is from Lehman Trucking and Escavating, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the bid amount was for $78,995.78,995.00. And the final bid was from Peterson Contractors, Inc. of Ryanbeck, Iowa. The bid bond was for 5% and the total bid was for $82,300.82,300.00.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to then adopt a resolution approving the award of contract to Benton Sand and Gravel, Inc. of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $33,800. And approving the contract bonds and certificate of insurance in conjunction with demolition and site clearance services with no RACM of 801 to 805 Commercial Street.
Second.
Very good. Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Thank you. Item three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for the status of funds for the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Commercial Pump Station Project.
Second. Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this item? All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? And I know there is. Brian, would you like to give us an update on what this is?
Absolutely. This is a requirement for the community.
Tell us who you are, please.
I'm Brian Schoen with the Interco Office. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. This is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant Program. These dollars are matched to EDA dollars, Economic Development Administration dollars, and we're working on the commercial pump stations. In the handout that was provided, there are the five, the five locations of the five sites. We are substantially complete with the first three, which is Phase One, Vinton, Verden, and Westfield. And we have, are under construction with the final two pump stations. And as a part of this requirement, we have to give you an update. We've given you the dollars that are drawn through the fifth draw of EDA and through the third draw of CDBG. And we continue to draw funds on these projects. Construction continues to move. We will be asking for an extension on the block grant deadline for the contract, and we've received one for EDA. So, moving through the handout, I know you got this a couple of weeks ago from engineering staff, but the project continues to move, so we've got a few updates since then. And as we move forward, we'll be closing out that first phase on those first three. We'll be continuing construction, closing that out, and then hopefully wrapping the project up over the course of the next year. If there are any questions, please let me know. I will be back to do the residential pumps then, probably in a few months when we get those bills up to snuff as well.
Perfect, Brian. Thanks for the update. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else that has any comments regarding the CDBG Commercial Pump Station Project? Second time.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Thank you. Item number four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole.
I move we table an ordinance vacating the west 40 feet of David Street, located south of West Parker Street, subject to the retention of utility easement over, under, and upon the entire area, to be vacated for 30 days. And that would be September 22nd. And that request comes to us from Dennis Haggenow.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding this? I think everybody knows what we're doing here. All in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and that item is tabled until September 22nd. If somebody could take the first four resolutions, please, 5, 6, 7, and 8.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a resolution approving, number five, professional services agreement with envision of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount not to exceed $32,000 with a reimbursable amount of $500 for design work, contract documents, bidding assistance, supplemental reviews, and onsite meetings with construction personnel in conjunction with the Waterloo Center for the Arts Restroom Renovation/Expansion Project. Number six, a resolution approving award of bid to Dick's Petroleum, Incorporated of Tripoli, Iowa, in the amount of $35,993.3 for central garage oil distribution piping project. And number seven, a resolution approving submission of traffic safety grant application in the amount of $300,000, Iowa Department of Transportation, to be used for traffic safety at the intersections of Old Sage and Dubuque Roads, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number eight, a resolution authorizing Traffic Operations Department to conduct a study for the possible removal of traffic school signals at Falls Avenue and Magnolia Parkway.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding any of those four? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Those motions carry. Just a little heads up, counsel, 9, 10, and 11 are all asking to approve PSAs with AECOM. So I thought we'd do all three of those together, 9, 10, and 11. And Bob is here, Bob Bamsy with AECOM. And when we get through doing these, Bob, if we could just give us a little brief update on each one of those, that would be great. There are some really important stuff that we're dealing with and some relatively large dollars, so maybe we could get that. So if somebody would take 9, 10, and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Cole?
No, I move we adopt a resolution approving a professional service agreement with AECOM of Waterloo in the amount of $37,500 for engineering services for the review of five sanitary sewer pumping stations at Hackett Road, Highway 63 South, Douglas Street, Titus, and Tower Park, and authorize mayor to execute said document. 10 is a resolution approving a PSA with AECOM of Waterloo in the amount of $225,000 for engineering services for construction-related services for the Dry Run Creek Interceptor Sewer and Pumping Station. That would be Kimball Avenue to Texas Street Pump Station Project, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And 11 is a resolution approving a PSA with AECOM of Waterloo in the amount of $85,000 for engineering services for construction-related services for the flow equalization facilities overflow connection to the satellite WPCF project, and authorize mayor to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Ms. Cole. Bob, just give us an update. Would you please, since you're here, on those three projects and kind of give us a overview of what they are?
I'm Bob Bamsy with AECOM. As you all know, we've been in discussions with EPA, and these projects all relate to, in some form, the EPA issues. The pumping stations that are...
Bob, hang on just a second. Can you all hear back there? It doesn't... Mark, would you check that, please, and see if that microphone, it doesn't, we're not hearing you all that well, Bob, and I just want to make sure that we can get a microphone turn. Maybe you can get up closer to her, buddy. Yeah, thanks. Emote.
Emote?
You're asking an engineer to emote.
I'm sorry. I, you were on a roll, too. Okay, this all relates to EPA.
I was, and I'd explained every question that you possibly could have asked in the meantime. All right. The projects that are included here, all in some form relate to the issues that we're having with EPA. The five pumping stations that are under consideration here, we will look at the structural, mechanical condition of the systems, and we know a couple of them are probably likely to need replacement. We want to verify that. And then look at, is it adequately sized for the future, so that when we reconstruct or rehabilitate the pump station, that it is then adequate for what will lead in the future. The second one is the, well, it's factually known as the Dry Run Interceptor. It runs from Kimball, takes a lot of the loading that currently is served by the Tower Park Pump Station, which pumps it across San Marnon, runs down through the 9th Street corridor where we have some wet weather flow problems. This would reduce that issue from the SSO standpoint and also give us some capacity for economic development that we're anticipating in that area. And then the third one is a connection between our current flow equalization facilities at the treatment plant. We currently have 20 million gallons worth of flow equalization capacity, and we have the satellite side of the treatment facility that we maintain some water in it just to protect the equipment. This would give us additional storage for wet weather flow. It would connect from the FEQ, or the Flow Equalization Facilities, to the satellite. And then we would include a pumping station that will take the satellite, what we store in there, back to the head end of the eastern facility when the storm has passed. And EPA is pretty well demanding, or requesting, maybe demanding at this point's a little strong, but certainly encouraging us to use that as a storage capacity.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Bob? Thanks, Bob. Appreciate it very much. Counsel, do you have any questions? Madam Clerk, it's a roll call.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. The motions carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Walper.
Number 12 is a resolution setting the date of hearing as September 2nd, 2014, for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 1019 Lafayette Street to Yona, Valencia, and Sergio Rangel, with a purchase price of $95,100 through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 13 is a resolution setting the date of hearing as September 2nd, 2014, for the sale and conveyance of city-owned property located at 919 Lafayette Street to Gregory A. Sykes and Jessica Hoffman, with a purchase price of $121,000 through the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, and instruct city clerk to publish notice. 14 is a resolution approving the contract bonds certificates of insurance to Pella Roofing of Benton, Iowa, in the amount of $27,950 in conjunction with the metal roof, metal roofing restoration, snow removal equipment building project at the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions regarding those three? Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
The motions carry. 15, 16, and 17, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item 15 is adopting a resolution approving contract bonds and certificate of insurance to Modern Builders, Inc. of Janesville, Iowa, in the amount of $66,350 in conjunction with the Replace Bifold Door Hanger Number Two Project at the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. Item 16 is adopting a resolution approving award of bid of MB Companies, Inc. of Chilton, Wisconsin, in the amount of $545,892 for the purchase of carrier vehicle with rotary plow for the Waterloo Regional Airport. And item number 17 is adopting a resolution approving the Federal Aviation Administration Grant in the amount of $872,643 for the acquisition of snow removal equipment project for the Waterloo Regional Airport, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding any of those three? Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motions carry. Next three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart?
I move that we adopt a resolution approving right-of-way agreement with the Iowa Department of Transportation, number NHSX-063-670-3H-07, for the reconstruction of US 63 in Waterloo from Jefferson Street to Franklin Street, and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said documents. And number 19, I move to adopt a resolution approving construction plans for 2014 East San Marnon Drive, eastbound left-turn lane at Soria Drive, project as submitted by Mint Design of Waterloo, Iowa. And 20, I move to adopt a resolution approving professional service agreement with Impact
Street for the construction of a new bus barn and maintenance facility and instruct city clerk to publish notice. Number twenty-two, the resolution setting date of hearing as September 2nd, 2014, to vacate approximately 300 feet by 20 feet portion of public alley located within Block 18 of Hayes Edition, generally located between West 14th Street and West 15th Street north of Blackhawk Street and instruct city clerk to publish notice. And number twenty-three, a resolution setting date of hearing as September 2nd, 2014, to appeal the city code requirement prohibiting vehicles from parking on the city-owned right-of-way located along 15th Street between Blackhawk Street and the Cedar River and instruct city clerk to publish notice.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions? Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Mayor, I know on item number twenty-one, we're just setting the date of public hearing, but I was just wondering, is the plan still that we're going to do some kind of a swap for development land out at Orange?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, it is. In the development agreement, it stated that the Waterloo Community Schools would demolish the Orange School Building and all the playground area, all the buildings out there, and turn that over to the City of Waterloo.
Thank you.
Further? I'm sorry. Roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. There's two left, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving award of hotel motel discretionary funding to leisure services Cedar Valley Sportsplex of Waterloo, Iowa, for the comprehensive marketing campaign in the amount of $10,000. Twenty-five, I move to adopt a resolution approving grant award with Iowa Arts Council, Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, in the amount of $15,000 to be used to support FY 2015 general operating expenses.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either one of those two?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
And number twenty-four, that funding is of hotel motel tax discretionary funding for additional marketing for the Sportsplex. So just wanted to state...
Statement rather than question.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I have a question on that item. I thought you did, too. Michelle, so was that part of their original budget that for those kind of marketing dollars, they would get those from hotel motel grant?
That's probably better addressed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, your name was on it, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, I submitted it, but I think...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Yeah, we're looking at a combination of both. We do have some budgeted funding, but we don't have enough funding in our regular budget that you approved for a comprehensive marketing approach for the facility. And we think this early in the game, it's important to do that. This would be used primarily for TV advertising on media for some spots during key football games and basketball games and things like that. We think they'll be good times. So it is a combination.
Thank you.
Sure.
Further questions? Roll call vote on those two, please.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carry. There's two left, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we adopt a resolution approving award of hotel motel discretionary funding to leisure services Cedar Valley Sportsplex of Waterloo, Iowa, for the comprehensive marketing campaign in the amount of $10,000. Twenty-five, I move to adopt a resolution approving grant award with Iowa Arts Council, Iowa Department of Cultural Affairs, in the amount of $15,000 to be used to support FY 2015 general operating expenses.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, do you have any questions regarding either one of those two?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
And number twenty-four, that funding is of hotel motel tax discretionary funding for additional marketing for the Sportsplex. So just wanted to state...
Statement rather than question.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a question. I have a question on that item. I thought you did, too. Michelle, so was that part of their original budget that for those kind of marketing dollars, they would get those from hotel motel grant?
That's probably better addressed.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, your name was on it, so that's why I asked.
Yeah, I submitted it, but I think...
I'm sorry, yeah.
Paul Hudding, Leisure Services Director. Yeah, we're looking at a combination of both. We do have some budgeted funding, but we don't have enough funding in our regular budget that you approved for a comprehensive marketing approach for the facility. And we think this early in the game, it's important to do that. This would be used primarily for TV advertising on media for some spots during key football games and basketball games and things like that. We think they'll be good times. So it is a combination.
Thank you.
Sure.
Further questions? Roll call vote on those two, please.
Mr. Lynn.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries. One item left, item twenty-six, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I move that we approve change order number three for an increase of $68,287.50 for work performed by J&amp;K Contracting, Inc. of Ames, Iowa, for the No Name Creek Interceptor Sewer Contract Number 849 due to additional locations requiring silt fence identified during SWP inspections and authorize mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good. Counsel, is there any need for further explanation on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It's time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to mayor or counsel, step to the microphone and tell us who you are. Jim?
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I'm against the allocation of the hotel motel tax money going to the Sportsplex. I know that the City of Waterloo and Blackhawk County are different identities, but if you wanted to give that $10,000 to give it the country view out there, I don't think you'd hear a complaint from anybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor and members of the Waterloo City Council, my name is Marcella Grover and I reside at 206, 203 Marion Drive, Waterloo, Iowa. And once again, I bring my opposition to the Pride Fest being held in Waterloo, Iowa. And the first reason I oppose the Pride Fest is that it promotes a sinful life, and men may call homosexuality an alternate lifestyle or gender orientation. However, God, the one true Jehovah God, calls homosexuality a sin. And remember, he is far superior in intellect and wisdom more than any other man on earth. The second reason why I oppose the Pride Fest is because of the political agenda of the homosexuals. To verify my statements, I would like to introduce this book. This book is called The Homosexual Network: Private Lives in Public Policy. It is done by Reverend Ankri Eruda. I'm not sure that I pronounced his name correctly. But he is the director of the Catholic Center of the Free Congress Research and Education Center. And I quote now from this book. Their goals are to pass pro-homosexual legislation, number one, that homosexuality constitute a legitimate minority, number two, that homosexuals have been unjustly discriminated against in the past and are thus entitled to special treatment under the law, which means the granting of equal time by the Federal Communication Commission to homosexuals when homosexual actions are criticized by preachers on radio or television. Number two, denial of federal funds to religious schools because they discriminate against homosexuals. Number three, elimination of the sex offender registry. Number four, homosexual candidates for public office. And number five, the passing of the hate crime bills, which will place a person in jail with fines to pay by simply saying in public that homosexuality is a sin. Tell me, is it right for the City of Waterloo to endorse a gay pride fest when this group wants to jeopardize our civil rights? Is there any equality in this type of a situation? Civil rights are equal for all United States citizens under the United States Constitution, whether they're heterosexual or homosexual. Yet, when you turn around and elevate one special group, their civil rights and privileges are above the other group that is not part of it. And I would not call this equity under the law. I trust that you will do your duty and protect the civil rights of all citizens by stopping the pride fest for all years. Thank you.[847.57]